All right, I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, August 17th, 2020 to order. This, like most of our meetings for the past several months, is a Zoom meeting. First order of business is pledge of allegiance. Charlie, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public on? I don't see anyone. So, no public forum. Item three, approved minutes, and those will be the minutes of the August 3rd Board of Selectment meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second? Discussion, comments, changes, additions, deletions? Hearing none, call the question. Selectmen Federici.
I was muted. Sorry, I did have one comment.
Okay, and that was?
There's something that's came up. Did it save my minutes? There's a typo on a number. For some reason, my marks didn't survive here. Hold on. There was a decimal point somewhere where it didn't belong. Changed the number completely. You know, go, go, uh... Here we go. Nope. Here we go. Section three. It says 16.38. I'm pretty sure that was 1638. See that? That's plow, swing, cylinders, second line. What page you went? I'm on section three. Take possible action on what page? Page five. Is this better?
Now we can hear you.
Okay.
Page three.
Page five, section number three.
Oh, yeah, 16 through.
Oh, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
1638, you're right.
I see it. I'll have Trey fix it.
You got it.
Thank you.
Hey, anything else?
That's it. Thanks.
That's it. Call the question. Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Selectmen Havertah.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye, and that makes it unanimous. It carries. Item four, Finance Director, Mary Jane Malvissi. Mary Jane, you're gonna primarily go over...
I'll finish your sentence, I guess. I'm gonna primarily go, primarily go over where we are currently as of June 30, 2020. We'll be reporting next year, for the current year, at the, at the next month's meeting. So if you, if you look at revenues, you can see that we ended up revenues, even though a little slightly less than the prior year, we were at 101.2 with $1.2 million surplus made up, as you can see, primarily from tax collection, the fire department, and the Board of Education, which is the ECS and excess cost grant that remained in our, on our side. So I don't know if anybody has any particular questions. It's not a lot different than what we reported last month.
Not, not to be the harbinger of doom, but the, the odds of the state money just feel so remote at the moment, you know, in the coming years. So just, I'm, I'm sure everybody's having the same thought. We're all experiencing the same thing, but it's nice that it happened this year. We gotta sort of aggressively factor that in, I would think, coming forward. I'm on the phone.
Yes, of course, with the biennial budget, we are hoping that the money will come in this current year and a little bit more leery on next year, but absolutely something to always consider with the state budget.
Yeah, anyway, that's just...
Next year, you mean next calendar year, or?
Fiscal.
Current. Our fiscal year, okay.
Yeah, so this budget might be okay that we're in, heading into, hopefully, you know, barring some, some gymnastics.
Anyway. Yeah, statutorily, it's already, already, so, the, you know, the legislature would need to do something different. The governor's office has the ability to rescind up to 5% in, in, in declared financial emergencies.
Yep.
The 5% would, would not necessarily impact us dramatically, but, yeah, I, I agree. I think we talked about this at the budget time, that the 21 fiscal year was not the concern. It's the one that we're gonna have to craft together next November or December through, through February.
And since we're, since we're on the topic at the moment of the current year, the preliminary July numbers are very good. You know, we've, we've mentioned that we were receiving our tax revenue, and at the end of July, we are only down 12% from the, the prior year. Same with tax collection, down 12% from the prior year throughout the whole month of July. So that was very good news, and that is continuing into August. And because of that, we were able to release the pension and the medical payments for the month of July. But indications are very good for this year.
Mary Jane, when you...
Yes?
When you say down, you're comparing it to previous year, right?
Correct, correct, yes. Comparing it to last year at the end of July.
That's been fairly significant. I mean, that, that's been consistent from the last report to this report, so that we might consider that going to be the number going forward, being down 10, 13%.
I thought last month it was 15%. I thought, didn't you say it was 15% behind?
Correct. As, as of mid-July, I think it was like July 13th, it was 15% by the time we, now it's 12 at the end of July. But keep in mind, you know, it probably represents the number of people who are waiting until October to pay. Some people just do that just because. And so hopefully, that, that number will come back up.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Mary Jane, but you're comparing it to previous year. And, you know, I, I don't want to belabor the point. It's just that, you know, it's, we'll have to keep an eye on it. If it remains consistent, you know, in that 10, 12%, you know, that's the number it's gonna be, that's all. But I don't want to belabor it.
Excuse me, what about those late bank escrow payments?
The majority of the escrow payments are, are in, I think we were short, I think the number was 127,000, so almost all of those are in.
Yeah, there is no universal policy at this point, but most banks are going to, you know, just modify the escrow accounts of the customers at this point. That's my understanding.
But we, we received almost all of it.
They, they'll pay the taxes due on, on the individual properties and work it out with the mortgagee. It's nothing official, but that seems to be the policy at this point.
I, I agree with Charlie. We need to keep an eye on it, continue to monitor it. Obviously, 12% against the previous year, down 12%. There are significantly different considerations. Last year, they didn't have the deferment. I had a conversation with three different residents, individuals in town, probably all of, all of whom you folks would recognize in terms of names. They happen to be landlords, and they all three deferred their, their taxes. However, they all got a notification last week from the tax collector's office because they had failed to fill out the form landlords are supposed to fill out in order to get the, the 90-day deferment. So there's, there's several of those that gone out, which are probably gonna get paid very quickly owing to the fact that they're accumulating interest because they didn't, they didn't file the appropriate payment. Okay, so Mary Jane, you're looking, we're looking at about 1.2 million in, in surplus on the revenue side.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other revenue-related questions? Okay. So we'll move on to expenditures. The first thing I want to point out is that the Board of Ed figure has not been adjusted on the town's end. We recently received some final adjustments from the Board of Education that are not in here. I'm actually, I'm hoping to get them done today and provide the Board of Finance with updated reports for tonight. But the Board of Education are, is going to come in. The report I gave you shows 797,000. The final number, if you have a pen ready, is 254,645. That's where the Board of Ed expects to end the year, bringing the grand total to 841,583 of surplus as of right now. So that little bit changes the numbers of the reports that I gave you. Just so you know what we've done on the town side, we have closed out a number of purchase orders that we no longer needed for the end of the year, and on the other hand, have encumbered money for projects and services that were unable to be done during the COVID time, but we are extending into the current year. So the encumbrances of 722,000 are fairly accurate. As of June 30, we're always still looking at those, and by the time our audit is complete, there might be additional adjustments, but that's a good number as of today. We have a couple pending, other pending items. Specifically, the waste transfer station does owe the town back some transfers for items such as insurance. So once those numbers are finalized, that will increase our surplus on the expenditure side because that is money coming back to the town. The other thing we did is if you were to look through your detail, if you remember, we applied everything that we were expending for COVID to a special line item in each specific budget. I have reversed those numbers, and we have a receivable on the balance sheet because we anticipate all of that money coming back either through FEMA or through the CARES Act. So that those expenditures no longer show on the expenditure side. It is a receivable for the town.
Mary Jane, do you have a total on that at this point?
It was about 177,000.
Okay.
How confident are we that we're going to collect that?
For the items that we have there, we're fairly confident. There are a couple things that FEMA may not allow, such as the laptops we've bought for just the school for distance learning and also for the town, but the CARES Act is supposed to cover that. The one thing I did not transfer was the overtime, the anticipated overtime pay that we expended for, for COVID. And the reason I didn't do that was possibly to cover any of that delta. So I, so I've kind of built in a little cushion there, so I hope you agree with that. But just in case there is some items that they, they don't approve. But primarily, everything we did during the last few months are PPEs. We've brought in Plexiglas for the windows. So a lot of those things are absolutely on the list. All the legal fees, although the legal fees will not be covered by FEMA, we already know that, the legal fees are on the list for the CARES Act. So we've tried to really put the things in that we're fairly confident.
Where do the things from registrar of voters and their additional expense fall? Is that in this, in this calculation?
It, it is. I have requested numbers from the registrar of voters. They are receiving other grant funding, so I will apply that grant funding first before we put those, any balance left into FEMA or CARES. So we're...
Oh, okay, so it'll be a grant and then, okay.
Yeah, we're trying to manage that.
The other question I add with the potential adjustment to the, to surplus, do you have a ballpark number of what the undesignated fund is at this point in time?
Um, I, I don't have that at my fingertips because I don't want to give you a wrong...
I think the unassigned fund balance is about 10.5 billion. That was as of close of fiscal year, 2019. That was a 2019 number, and we're looking at nearly 2 million here between expenses and, and revenues. So that number is gonna be closer to 12, 12.5.
Okay.
Right, and we'll, we'll be coming back at next month's meeting with some recommendations of making some fund balance transfers.
Yeah, it's like a half a million dollar hit in this surplus. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I, I just want to make sure that, I, I thought it was about those numbers. I just want to make sure it still was, okay.
Right, and those, those numbers represent meeting our, our policy. So, you know, we're trying not to exceed it too much. I just want to make note that the transfers that we have is another line item on the agenda. The transfers, the fund balance transfers that I have are already represented in the expenditure budget that I'm showing you, so that this is the effect of those transfers. So if there are any of the transfers that we choose not to do, that would, I would have to go back and return them to the, the expense line, so.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
One other comment, Charlie. The, as you recall, the Board of Finance allocated $250,000 of unassigned fund balance to balance the 2021 operating budget, so that 10.5 is 10.250 or whatever. So, because...
That, that fund we had putting towards, oh, I forgot what the specifics...
Future medical...
I think it was pension liability.
Yeah.
That's a set, that's a separate line item, right? Or fund or whatever.
Correct. It's, all of the, all of the fund balance line items that you set aside in committed funds are all counted as our total fund balance, but they are not in the undesignated fund balance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else on, anything else, Mary Jane?
Um, I, I don't have any other, anything else to report unless I can answer any other questions.
Just the only, the only one is Charlie just had mentioned. There were no changes to the medical account from our July report. So, because it's not, you did not put a medical report together at this time.
No, the, the June 30 medical report stands as is.
And everything resets, right, as far as? Okay.
Yes.
Do you have any feel yet for overtime or expenses due to the storm, or is it too early to really have that together?
Um, we are working to put those together. Public Works did work all Saturday and Sunday, so all of that is overtime. So we have, we do have a significant amount of overtime, and along with the overtime of the employee, we do receive funding from FEMA for use of the vehicles. So we are currently tracking and matching people to vehicles so that we can get back all that we are eligible for.
So it's, it's a good question. By Wednesday, we have to submit a preliminary estimate of the cost to the state, and we're in the process of pulling that information together.
Yeah, when, the payroll that we'll be processing this week and getting those records are coming to us today. So as we get those records today for payroll, I'll be able to pull out those overtime costs.
Right, and then, and those overtime costs will be, they'll be pretty, they'll be pretty hefty because Public Works has been, they were running overtime every day from, including the day of the storm, Saturdays, Saturdays and Sundays, both weekends. The stump dump, not that that's an exorbitant expense, but the stump dump has been open continuously since the, since the storm and will through probably the balance of this week. So through Saturday. So Public Works will probably start to taper down a little bit in terms of the, the overtime in the, in the evenings. However, based on the cleanup of the streets, which is, you know, pretty significant effort, we may or may not need overtime for them on the weekend.
And the, the largest expense we've had outside of overtime is to have the, the mulch, you know, the tree mulch. So that, you know, that, that's a, a large dollar amount. So that, that's the biggest expense outside of overtime that we've had.
What do you mean by the mulch? Were you the chipping?
The chipper, I'm sorry. I couldn't think of the right word, the chipper. The chipper makes the mulch, sorry.
I don't understand how, other than the overtime for people that run it, I mean, we, did we hire chippers, is what you said?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have our own chipper. We, we rent flats.
Wait, wait, this, this, we do have chippers. What we don't have is the big grinder. The grinder from the stump dump is the one that we...
Sure.
We contract that in already. We contract out with Durham. No, we haven't, haven't brought it in yet. We are currently contracting with another provider because they're gonna be available to do it shortly. So Pam and Tom, and Vicki and, and Tom Philly and are working on a contract with an alternative provider, but we intend to bring in within, within the next week.
Okay, so that, that will be able to be qualified for the FEMA things, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, because I, I normally, that was only once or twice a year we would bring in the grinder, but to bring it in specifically, which, you know, I can appreciate it's needed. I was just trying to understand why. I, I thought Mary Jane had said it was one of the bigger expenses and...
It's 15, it was $15,000. I think that was the cap we had.
Yeah, no, I didn't know it was a grinder. I, I can appreciate, even if we had to rent some additional chippers, I, I didn't see where it was gonna be bigger than overtime, but what grinder makes a big difference. So, I understand.
Sorry, I used the wrong word.
No problem.
Technical term.
It's probably why I'm not Public Works Director.
No, but you're watching the pennies of them, that's...
That's right.
That's your job, right?
Yeah, and we can't use DMI Abs because Durham and Middlefield needs to use it at this time, so that's why we've had to...
Everybody's in the same boat, of course.
Yeah. And actually, this, this individual has given us a better rate than we are getting from our friends in Durham.
That's true, yeah.
Okay, anything else on finance?
Just the transfers. I don't want to miss that.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, okay, so as you could see from the expenditure report, there were four items that were showing over budget. So I have the...
Something just happened, Mary Jane. You went silent. You're on mute, okay, okay.
I don't know, I put a piece of paper on my, on my laptop and it automatically unmuted me. I don't know what happened. So the building department, as we have seen in prior years, the contracted salaries is offset by revenue. If you remember, I noted in the past that in the current budget, we have better, better budgeted for this line item so that we won't have this transfer, hopefully, again, for this year. The, the second one is economic development, a very small amount. You know, we estimate the amount of hours for that office and there, that came up a little bit higher. I can see Mitch is, is looking at me funny, but it, it was in the salary line that, that difference was there. The fire department has an overage of 208,000 mainly because of some long-term disability, people out on long-term disability that they've had to replace. I have asked the members of the fire department to be in attendance at tonight's Board of Finance meeting to specifically speak to that, should there be additional questions. So those are the, oh, then I have capital. We had, through, throughout the budget process, as we've done in, in other years, we've had some anticipated surpluses in our operating, and we have allowed them, some of the departments to buy additional capital. As you know, they've come through, many of them have come through the Board of Selectment for approval. So there are a few that you can see that I've listed on the capital side. Some are specifically small items that have gone slightly over budget, but in the whole, in the whole, it's items that were surplus items on operating that we are just transferring over to capital. That total's 232,000. So I'm recommending transferring the 476,486 from three line items that do have a surplus, the police department, employee benefits, and park and rec.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion to approve those transfers as described?
I'll make the motion.
And a second, and a second. Call the question on favor, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Selectmen Havertah.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Yeah, fund balance transfers?
So on the fund balance side, we have some that we are recommending this morning. The employee benefits line, the reserve for personnel, and the retirement sick line are two line items that we do have reserves for. Since this money was not needed in the current budget, we are recommending that both of those numbers be moved into reserve for personnel in the, in the current, for the current budget. On the, on the library, there is a significant amount of salary surplus because of how the library managed during COVID. So I'm recommending that we also move that money into reserve for personnel to be used in the current year for when we have all of our transfers because of negotiations. And then on, you've, you've heard me talk about streetlights and hydrants coming in way under budget this year, thanks to purchasing of the streetlights and the merger for the hydrants. So that totaled 117,000. I'm recommending that that go into facilities, projects to help in, in future years. All of these transfers are really intended to help us in future years. As we stated earlier, we are anticipating our budgets to be even tighter for the following year, and I'm hoping that this will help us smooth that and mitigate that increase.
How, how much do we have in the sick leave fund balance relative to what the likely exposure is?
Relative to the exposure. Exposure is somewhat high. I don't, I don't have those numbers in, in front of me. What we do each year, or I should say, Mitch can talk about it. Mitch each year anticipates who we think might be retiring. We look at what that total exposure is. We see what we have put in our committed fund balance, and then we budget the difference in, in the year. So this year, although we've had a couple of retirements that fall into that category, they are branching into the new year, and that's when the effect will be, be felt. So...
And, and as I remember, and I'm sorry, we've trod this ground before, but the, this is really a legacy expense, right? I mean, people after a certain date don't have unlimited sick time that they can pull back.
I'll, I'll let Mitch, I'll let Mitch answer that.
Yeah, thanks, Lou. The overall exposure is kind of like an OPEC-type thing. The overall exposure for us is over a million dollars in the retiree sick leave. That's if, you know, everybody would be eligible to leave today, which they're not, and everyone would be able to collect today, which they're not. So we try to allocate each year what we anticipate in terms of retirements, and sometimes we, we judge right, sometimes judge wrong. So we try to keep it as close to what we think is gonna be happening as possible. It is pretty much a closed account. There's no new employees picking up on this. The maximum amount that any employee can cash out, so to speak, is 140 days, but there are very few people left in that. I think there's only one person left in that category. Most can cash out up to 70 days, and then it's been triggered down to 30 and less to where new employees don't have any retiree benefit for sick leave. There's no, there's no new employees being, being hired that can cash out for sick leave. It's been a double-edged sword, but with, with increased sick leave seems to be for those that don't have the ability to cash out, but we try to handle that from a management standpoint.
Well, thank you.
To your question, it didn't, please, please let me know where I didn't answer.
No, and, and in fact, it's even, it's even better than, I, so sometimes there's not necessarily lump sums that are paid. People take it out over a certain period of time. As they leave, they say, listen, my last day of work is X, but I'm gonna collect my sick time for the next... collect my sick time for the next five weeks and then I'll see you later.
Um.
That happen.
If they're, if they're going out on on a sick issue, they will, they'll collect it to the end. Otherwise, it's just a payout. Um, uh, we don't necessarily allow people to use sick leave. We allow them to use vacation time to stretch things out. The sick leave does usually get paid out, uh, in in a lump sum. It sometimes is broken up. Uh, they may choose to have it spread out over several months or or different two fiscal years sometimes for tax purposes, which we're willing to do because it helps us as well. Uh, but we've been able to keep up with it and, um, like I say, the overall exposure has, over the years, uh, been been going down, uh, slowly but going down.
And and the bottom line is you just give us that annual, uh, likely exposure in the budget presentation.
Correct. It's it's a guesstimate of where we think we'll be. We've been, uh, pretty good with it, uh, over the years. Like I say, sometimes somebody retires who we weren't expecting and other times people stay on longer than we expect. Obviously, those that have announced retirements, uh, far enough in advance, we're able to, uh, project pretty accurately.
Yeah, great, terrific. Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
Uh, Mitch, would you, uh, uh, share the spreadsheet that we traditionally work on, uh, each budget year, the retiree sick leave spreadsheet?
Matt, let's talk about that separately. Last time I shared a spreadsheet, it became, uh, free information available. I'm a, I'm not, uh, I think you would actually have an offline conversation about that.
That's fine. Well, it, all that information is FOI-able anyway. It's contractual, uh, so it's FOI-able, but we will talk offline on it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, just, uh, just as a a quick, uh, example, um, Jeff Hutchinson retired, uh, in effective August eleventh. He's one of the remaining folks who had the hundred and forty days, right, Mitch?
You're muted.
That is correct and, uh, had a very significant payout as a result based on the fact that he's one of the very few left with the hundred and forty days. Number one, number two, his salary, because it's based on number, you know, his salary. That was a significant, uh, exposure to us this year, which we will not see the likes of, uh, going forward.
And again, that's in the current fiscal year, um, so the money that we're transferring into the reserve will help mitigate that.
Correct.
Good. All right. Anything else on the, uh, the fund balance transfers? No? Uh, uh, do we have a motion? We don't have a motion yet. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
All the questions, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Havert?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roa?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you, Mary Jane.
Thank you.
Uh, item five, Parks and Recreation Director Rick Maynard, uh, item, uh, so just item one is to discuss and take possible action under recommendation to name the fields at Three Mile Course Park that are known as upper Cox fields for Bill Wallach. Rick, floor is yours. Good morning.
Matt, if it's okay, I'll give a brief introduction, but I see there are a couple of people that, uh, came to the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, Catherine Bateman and Matt Ranola, um, who have a lot of passion about naming this field, these fields for Bill Wallach. So if if that's okay with you, Matt, I'll give sort of a brief introduction and is it okay if we let them?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so they they came to our, uh, uh, four, four, um, former members of, uh, Bill Wallach's teams, uh, came to the Parks and Recreation Committee on August third. Uh, for any of you who may not know, Bill was a coach for many years, the boys and girls soccer teams, um, not together, but you know, over the course of his career, uh, at Guilford High School. I think he was a uh, phys ed teacher at Baldwin for about thirty years. Uh, I understand he he had a a record of two hundred wins, ten losses, uh, during his tenure. But from what we got at the Parks and Recreation Meeting, more important than his record of wins and losses was the passion that his former players had with the impact Bill had on their lives as a coach, mentor and the kind of guidance, influence, uh, he had on them that they carried throughout their lives and their, you know, uh, well, to their adult ears now. And, um, they were very, very passionate about the impact Bill had on them. Uh, Bill also started the Unified Sports Program, uh, in town. That was, you know, it's, uh, special needs kids with, um, uh, non-special needs kids team together in various sport activities. Uh, in fact, we, uh, we sponsored one of those one summer and Bill ran that program for us over at Adam's School. Uh, many years ago, Bill also ran, uh, it was called the Guilford Indians Soccer Camp. That was a Parks and Rec sponsored soccer camp at Baldwin and Bill did that again for many, many years. Um, he's retired. He's eighty years old now, but he he also still, I think, does some coaching uh, with, uh, kids on the side. Um, the Parks and Recreation voted unanimously to approve naming the two, uh, upper fields at uh, Three Mile Course Park, which the former, uh, upper Cox fields, uh, Bill Wallach fields. But I'd, uh, I'd like to let maybe Matt Ranola, you want to start out, Matt? And you can give a little more info about, uh, why you folks are proposing this.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. I'm gonna let, um, Catherine Bateman talk first. I I just to let you guys know, um, Catherine Bateman, Tina Peel and Alisa Luffler are on the phone is, or on the Zoom as well. Um, they're part of the committee that we put together about a year ago and in, um, you know, to take action on this and and I appreciate your comments. I'll, I'm gonna let Catherine speak first and then um, I can kind of talk afterwards and give maybe Tina and Alisa a minute as well if they want to, uh, chime in. So thanks for your time and and I'll let Catherine take it from here. I think you're on mute, Catherine.
I'm good now?
Yeah.
See, always a team player helping out. Um, first of all, I just want to say good morning to everyone. I also want to thank everyone for their time and this opportunity. Um, I'm very lucky. I grew up in Guilford, Connecticut with the soccer ball in my crib, like most of us did. I'm very lucky. I had unbelievable roots growing up in Guilford. And as we've all grown up and moved away from the town or traveled or taken other jobs, there's one thing that I think we have all had an unbelievable connection with, and that isn't so much the soccer field as much as Bill Wallach being on the field with us. I cannot say enough how my heart still is with Guilford because what I learned on that soccer field throughout my years with my team players and with fellow players, boys and girls, and with interacting with Bill Wallach, um, it's unsurpassable. What I'm about to tell you is how he has touched the lives of so many people. I was maybe an easy one to touch, maybe not, but he has touched the disabled. He has touched the kids that had a drinking problem, a drug problem. He had touched the kids that thought they could never get the soccer ball in the net, or for some that thought they couldn't stop the ball from going in the net. He had the ability to touch so many walks of life that more than I don't know if any of us even could imagine. The camps that he ran for every summer, Alissa Luffler that's here and Jamie Miller, who's always on the team and Matt and Tina and all of us know, we were a part of that. We taught those kids how to play soccer, but what he taught us is teamwork. And what he taught us is it didn't matter if you were on the field or off the field, it was life. When I graduated college, I had an interview with the largest luxury company in the world, which is still today. And I was the tenth girl to go in that office. I was nervous. It was in New York. I was a little girl that grew up in Guilford and went to school in Newport, Rhode Island. But I was gonna get that job. I walked in and the president said, what is the difference between you and the last nine girls that looked like you with a black dress and white pearls? And I said, I grew up on the soccer field. I know what it is to be on the field with eleven women reaching one goal. I know what it is to lose. I know what it is to tie, and I also know what it is to win, but I also know what you take away from it. Bill Wallach once told me when I was upset and I fell down and I got knocked down and the girl scored the goal, I was destroyed. It didn't end at the field. He called me later that night, stopped over my house and said to me, "Life is not easy, but it went through three other people after you lost that ball. So remember, your other players tried to help you too." What I learned in life is we are gonna fall down on the ground, but wasn't it great that he has touched so many walks of life and has encouraged us that when we do get knocked down, whether whatever is in our life, we can succeed. Bill Wallach is an unbelievable man. It's an honor to put his names on those fields. It's an honor to know him. It's an honor that I was so lucky to be privileged to spend time with him. One of the last things I remember, and I still talk to him, but one of the last things I remember was my girls' team in high school. He was the boys' coach and we didn't do pasta dinners. And he said to me, what about a pasta dinner? I said, ah, we don't do pasta dinners. He said, well, you're gonna start now. And he went to one of our homes and he gave us a whole speech about life and soccer and family. Our team changed dramatically. Why? We walked into other people's homes. We saw a different side of the girl that maybe was just on the field. He let us know that there's more about than just putting the ball in the back of the net. It's loving each other. It's supporting each other. His name means so much to Guilford. I don't even think we'll ever know the impact of all the people that he has helped. But I know I am so lucky to call Bill Wallach my friend. I would not be where I am today without him. I am one of many, many women, many men, many people that know he is unbelievably the most remarkable man. I want to share one thing and I am OCD beyond belief, completely me. I've kept nothing. But Bill Wallach gave me this shirt way back when. I have no idea why we wore shirts so huge, but we did. And it said, "Piece of Art." Because he really wanted me to believe in myself. I'm never gonna get rid of this shirt. But I'm not the only one he touched. He touched us all. So I just want to thank Guilford for being the great town it is. I don't know any other town like it. And I also don't know any other soccer program. And I'm very grateful to be here today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Catherine. I appreciate those. Uh, I mean, you can see the passion. Uh, this was, this started about, uh, a year ago with, uh, Tina, myself and a a group of a few other people here, a couple of represented here. Um, Bill's turning eighty this year. Um, I think Catherine's comments kind of hit the nail on the head. I mean, he's more than a coach. He was obviously a very big part of my life as well. Um, I was a nineteen eighty-seven graduate of Guilford High School. Um, played soccer there for four years. Um, you know, I'm still friends with him today. We still talk all the time. Um, and I'm just, again, one of many that he's, you know, had the, had an, uh, lasting impact on. I think that, um, it's more about the coaching. It's more about mentoring. Um, it's more about, uh, the, uh, the, the, the people that he's been able to um, kind of, you know, from a, uh, rite of passage standpoint, get through the soccer program, but he's maintained con- constant contact with with his former players. He'd do anything for his former players. I mean, his record alone, when you talk about wins and losses is is, it's remarkable. I mean, it just, the boys, the boys team alone, I I think he had two hundred and twenty wins and ten losses over a fifteen-year period. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, you're you're talking about, uh, people like Bear Bryant, you know, uh, who've had all these, all these great wins, Joe Torre. I mean, Bill Wallach's in that, you know, from a coaching perspective at a high school level, there's nobody in Connecticut that kind of even matches him. But what what we wanted to do here is we, you know, we wanted to, uh, we have a big alumni network from from the soccer program. We'd, we'd love to do this. Um, COVID has kind of obviously taken a, uh, you know, uh, a toll on what we wanted to do. And we're, so we're kind of hunting this into next year at this time, but, uh, we'll probably, if we can get this approved by, uh, by you, um, what we'd like to do is, you know, uh, do some fundraising for, uh, for some improvements at Upper Cox School with with our alumni network and make a donation to, uh, you know, to the town of Guilford to, um, you know, to obviously provide a sign for the field, but also to, um, you know, make some capital improvements to the field if necessary. Um, you know, and so I think, you know, that's kind of where we're at with 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 that. We'll, we'll start, start that process immediately uh, and maybe look to do something as a formal dedication in the, in the springtime when, you know, hopefully COVID is uh, not with us and we can kind of gather a- as a community, um, you know, moving forward. So, um, I, again, I thank you as well for the opportunity to speak, you know, here and and, uh, and I'll let Tina, um, Tina Peel talk for for a second as well. She mentioned that she, she had some things that she wanted to say. So Tina's a uh, another former goalkeeper, I think class of eighty-nine, a couple of years behind me and, um, you know, she was an All-American at Guilford High School and and, uh, then went on to play, uh, women's soccer at, uh, at Yale, where I, I think she was also an All-American. So, uh, Tina, I'll let you, uh, you you take it from here.
Thank you, Matt and Catherine. Um, and thank you, Selectmen, for, uh, providing us the time on your schedule. Um, yes, I'm Tina Peel and I graduated nineteen eighty-nine. I wanted to give you a a little story or experience that I had with Bill Wallach that has lasted till today. Um, I did not play on a team like a women's team, a girls' team with Bill. And however, uh, when I was in the senior year and when I was about to break the national record for shutouts in the nation regarding, uh, yeah, career shutouts, um, Bill allowed me to train with the boys. And it was a phenomenal experience to be one of the only girls to train with the boys that last season, my senior year. And what I remember at the end of the season, and I did break the record and I had forty-seven shutouts in four years. Um, what I remembered at the end of the season was the boys were taking their picture, you know, the the group team picture. And I was there practicing at the end of the, um, practice and I was there. And the photographer came up and the boys lined up in in the goal and I moved away. Because I was like, that's the boys', you know, team picture. And Coach Wallach said, no, you come into the picture too. And so I came back and I was front and center in that team picture. And I was like, wow. You know, that was special. I was like, you know, he brought me onto that team with the boys. And then, when I became All-American and I went to the banquet, um, before, actually, I went to the banquet to receive my award as an All-American in high school, the boys' soccer team gave me this engraved bracelet. And it stated Tina Peel and my record of forty-seven shutouts. And it was a silver engraved bracelet. And it wrote, and the, and also the text was best goalkeeper in the nation. And I know that, you know, the boys giving me this bracelet, it was just phenomenal, but it wouldn't have been without Coach Wallach. And the heart he has and the respect that he showed the boys in terms of having a female, having a girl. And so that is one of the best memories that I've had with Coach Wallach and, um, who he is. Also, um, him, uh, participating and developing Unified Sports. The fact that Coach Wallach was such a phenomenal coach in the higher levels of soccer and has has had so many wins. And at the same time, one of his passions, and he told me his passion was actually with the Unified Sports and playing with the, and helping and supporting those kids who had physical and mental disabilities. And that's where he got a lot, a lot of joy. So that dichotomy between individuals who could be so good because they have ability and then individuals who do not have as much ability but can be so good at where they're at, I find phenomenal. So thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else gonna speak at this point? Uh, or Lisa?
Hi, uh, I, I can't really top with, uh, past teammates and players that I looked up to have said. All I can say is that he's, uh, he's a special guy. I've played for him. He's invited me as a practice, as a freshman, he invited me to the six AM plyometric training that he used to do with the boys. And he said, "You're just as good as them. You believe in yourself and you'll be just as good as them." And, uh, I believed it because he believed in me. Um, I've coached with him. And when I was a college player, I would coach summer teams with him and, uh, he's, he's a special guy. So, you know, I I really appreciate the time you guys are giving. So, you know, I really appreciate the time you guys are giving us and the consideration for this, this field naming. So thank you.
Good, thank you. Rick, has this been approved by your commission?
Yeah, Matt, August 3rd, we had a similar presentation from four members of the, the former players, Bill's former players, and they unanimously approved this. And, you know, according to the policies, the Parks and Recreation Commission can make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, you know, for naming of parks, facilities, and things like that. It's really a Board of Selectmen, and they unanimously supported it. You can see the passion that these folks have for the impact that Bill had on their lives. I know Bill pretty well myself, and I think he's an amazing guy, very deserving. Joe Chapasso, former Parks and Recreation Director in Branford, he was there for about 40-something years. I remember going to a conference and Joe said, we need to give bouquets to people while they're still alive. You know, so often things are named after people after they pass away, and I think this is a good opportunity to recognize Bill, he'll know it. Nathaniel Green was alive when this building was named after him. He died three weeks later of cancer, but he knew, he was very humble, didn't want to have the building named after him, but he knew it. And so I think this would be a great honor for Bill Wallach. He's a, as you heard, just a tremendous guy and I think well-deserving. So what the Parks and Recreation Commission would like to do is name both fields at Three Mile Course or Upper Cox, formerly was called Bill Wallach Fields.
Good, Rick. I, I do recall that we have at least one other field that's named after an individual. Ethel Maturro was one of them.
Well, yeah, actually, Movi Field, Ken Movi, Ralph Chapani Field, the baseball field at the high school.
Yep. So this is, this is consistent with past practice?
It is.
Good. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Rick, I have one, actually, a couple maybe. Realistically, how many fields would be available for an honor like this? Like, in other words, how many fields do you have that are just field number one, two, three, et cetera?
Well, Lee, there aren't any fields named after anybody. You know, the four fields there, Nut Plains, one of the, and I'm sorry, those, both, both those fields have a name on them now. Binner's Page Soccer Field, the Little League Fields of Binner aren't named. The lightest softball field is Cash Mitchell Field, but the three Little League Fields aren't. So there are a number of them still available.
Okay, so, Chris, I mean, it seems to me, and, and from this passionate presentation, I, I'm sure you're, I'm sure the Park and Rec Committee sort of considered not just the enthusiasm, genuine enthusiasm in favor of this, but whether somebody else would have been deserving of this, whether this is the type of immortal that, that, that makes sense and that, you know, two generations from now, people are gonna look back and say, oh yeah, jeez, I heard about this guy, he was something. That, that to me is sort of the standard that, that is called for, and I'm hearing that from this group in this presentation, and I'm assuming that's what the commission is considering, you know, before something goes in like this, which is, as we've learned maybe recently, not necessarily permanent, but essentially permanent.
I would say, yeah. Again, the commission was unanimous, there was no, no debate whatsoever about it. They're, they're full support of this.
And let me just say, let me just make one comment to your question. I mean, from a soccer perspective, I mean Guilford's a soccer town, it always has been, or at least it was when I grew up in Guilford and I, you know, went to schools all through, you know, all public schools from Guilford, from kindergarten through, you know, 12th grade. There's nobody in the town of Guilford from a soccer perspective that should have a field named after them, you know, before Bill Wallach. I mean, Bill Wallach put Guilford soccer on the map. I mean, he's known nationally from, from, just from a pure soccer perspective. And then there's so much more about Coach Wallach as a person, you know, that makes him deserving for this honor. I mean, this, he's in the Connecticut Soccer Hall of Fame, he's in the Connecticut Soccer, Connecticut Coaches Hall of Fame, he's won numerous awards, a Gold Key Award from the sports writers. But this, this honor is truly an honor that is, is being bestowed upon him by his former players. I mean, this, this, I think this is really like the, you know, the icing on the cake. And to Rick's point about being able to dedicate this to him while he's alive is, is just, you know, would be just fantastic for him, you know, and, and that's really kind of where we're at. So from a, from a purely, you know, soccer perspective, if you're gonna name a soccer field after someone in Guilford, he's, he's the first guy.
Yeah. So if you go back 40 years and you group up everybody that would be potentially on the shortlist, this is the guy you guys obviously zeroed in on.
This is the guy.
Without question.
This is the guy. I mean, he's, nationally, he's the guy too. I mean, he's, there's so many people, you know, and I'm, I'm a former soccer guy, so, you know, you tell people when you're in an airport somewhere and you're having a conversation with them and you say, well, yeah, I'm from Guilford, Connecticut. Wow, Guilford soccer, guy, I remember Guilford soccer, Bill Wallach. I mean, the guy comes up in just casual conversation. He's that well, he's that well-known in soccer circles. So he's the guy.
All right. All right, any other questions from board members? I want to thank all of you for taking the time to, to make the case. I personally have known Bill Wallach for a number of years. He impacted at least one of my children's lives through sports, and I share your, your perspective on him relative to the commitment that he made to our kids over all those years. Forget about the wins. That's not, that's not the important part.
Right.
What he did for, for so many of our youth, so many of our high school kids, and then with the, with the Unified Sports Program, which is still going on today and is very, still very successful, so the wins are, the wins are obviously important too, but, so I fully support this.
Thank you.
Anyone else comment? All right, is there a motion to approve the naming of the Upper Cox Fields for Bill Wallach?
I'll make the motion. I mean--
In a second. Any further discussion? Call the question. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner. Selectwoman Ruoff.
Sandy, you're on mute, buddy.
Put your thumb up. There you go. Selectman Hoy is also in. Thank you, thank you for your time and your passion and your commitment to getting this done.
Thank you very much. I--
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I got thrown off, but thank you so much. It's Catherine Bateman. I'm so happy and I thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, item six, Departmental Planner Kevin McGee. Item to address is consider take possible action on the acceptance of a conservation easement for Peddlers Ridge subdivision located on Assessor's Map 73, Lot 1, and to send to planning and zoning for mandatory referral under Connecticut General Statutes 8-24 and set a special town meeting on Zoom for September 1 at 8:30 a.m. Kevin, the floor is yours.
Okay, good morning, all. This is a subdivision on Peddlers Road, just across from Dennison Drive. It's a 22-acre subdivision. As part of the subdivision requirements are required to provide a minimum of 10% open space to the town or a nonprofit organization. If not, deed restrictions need to be placed on that portion there. The plans currently show, let me see if I can slide this up here.
We have it on our--
Okay, so for the public up in the upper corner here is a 4.78 acre area. It's covered with a percentage of wetlands and very hilly terrain. It's part of Lot 4, the, it'd be part of Lot 4 there, which is a total of 9.36 acres. So a little bit more than half of that will be dedicated open space recommended for, the form being recommended is for a conservation easement within that area. The land acquisi, this has been reviewed by the Wetlands Commission, who's sort of recommending some sort of restriction placed on that area there. It's been reviewed also by land acquisition. Land acquisition's first request was see if we get in a fee in lieu. Fortunately, we don't have the zoning regs and subdivision regs updated enough, which allows us to push that as our first requirement. So right now, it's at the choosing of the applicant right now. The second choice of the land acquisition was followed by conservation easement over the town receiving an innocent fee, especially since this property is not really connected directly to any other town or land trust piece of property. It's bordered on one side by Peddlers Road and on the other side by I-95, so it's not really a spot anybody really be interested in truly walking around freely on. So we're, the recommendation is currently in the middle of going to planning and zoning for approval. This conservation easement will follow the standard language of our conservation easement documents that we've been using for historic, for several years.
Thank you, Kevin.
Questions? No? All right, is there a motion to accept the conservation easement for the Peddlers Ridge subdivision located on Assessor's Map 73, Lot 1, and then also to make the mandatory referral to planning and zoning under Connecticut General Statutes 8-24 and set a special town meeting on Zoom for September 1 at 8:30 a.m. Is there a motion?
No move.
In a second.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Call the question, all in favor. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also. Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item seven, Sustainable Guilford Task Force. And this is at the request of the, well, really, it was really by mutual agreement and discussion between myself and members of the, the task force to update the Board of Selectmen on their activities. I know that you're all familiar with our Sustainable Connecticut Award, but there are some other things that you should be aware of that they're working on. This will lead to a larger conversation about the future of the task force and whether or not, because it was pretty specific in terms of the charge that we gave to them. So Pam and I have already started talking about making this a full commission or a committee. One, one thing that we've had some discussions about is getting representation from this task force on the Conservation Committee. So this, this is really to give you guys some background as to where they are, and I believe both Terry Kane and Julie Paquette are, are on. Is anyone else on? Let me take a look. I think that's it from the task force. So who's making the presentation? Is it you, Julie?
Yes, I am. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for having Terry and myself here this morning. We welcome the opportunity to report out on our activities over the past two years and also discuss next steps for our task force. Um, just a bit of a slide. About two years ago, in the summer of 2018, this board asked our task force to do two primary things. The first was to research and make a recommendation about the proposed ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags. And the second was to pursue certification in the Sustainable Connecticut program, and I'm gonna touch on each of these in the next few slides. The first, advising on the ordinance. You're very familiar with this timeline, but this activity really started with our task force reviewing the great work that a citizen group, BYO Guilford, had completed over two years and thinking about how to present that work to the citizens of Guilford. And in line with recommendations made by the Sustainable Connecticut framework, we really wanted to hold these public events with equity and inclusion principles. And what that really means is try to include as many people representing Guilford as possible in public events, including children and, and youth who might take an interest in this. And we were very happy with the outcome of these public meetings, one held in March 2019, and the second in May 2019 was the hearing. You remember, thank you for the ordinance passing unanimously in June 2019 and took effect this past January. Because of the nature in which we engaged the town, we were awarded Innovation and Equity credits by Sustainable Connecticut, the way it was reviewed and passed in town. Sustainable Connecticut doesn't typically award credits for straight-up bans. However, the engagement process around this particular ordinance in Guilford was, was worthy of credit under the program. So our second charge was to pursue certification. You might recall back in September 2018, Matt signed a resolution supporting Guilford's participation in the program. Then we started the work of meeting as a task force and also meeting with almost every staff member and multiple commissions in town. We put together a draft and submitted it last summer. During that time last summer, we also met with a Sustainable Connecticut Equity Coach a couple of times, held a community resiliency workshop, which many of you participated in, and solicited additional feedback from Sustainable Connecticut on what the town could do. We were very happy with the outcome. In November 2019, the town was awarded silver, and that certification has a three-year lifespan until November 2022. Taking a step back, if, if you aren't that familiar with Sustainable Connecticut, there's some wonderful resources and videos online describing what the program is and how it came to be. Participation in this program is not only about recognition, but we also have access to technical support from the program and community match funding for any project up to $15,000 that aligns with actions. And there's really no limit on the, the programs and projects that you can pursue. Currently, there are 106 registered municipalities, 14 of those, including Guilford, of course, are certified silver. So the question is, how did we earn certification? We earned 410 points out of a potential 1,920 points. So while this was silver, there's still an incredible amount of room to grow. We completed 29 actions out of 57, but across all nine categories that are shown on this slide, including three equity efforts. And I invite you to visit the Guilford application and everything we submitted, which is online at Sustainable Connecticut and available to the public in other municipality, other municipalities to learn from our work. In the next few slides, I'll go through featured credits under each of these categories, and I'll, I'll talk relatively quickly. I think when we meet with others, we, we go a little bit deeper to talk about credits we earned and then also credits we didn't earn that, that we could work towards in the future. So the first category is thriving local economies, which is about supporting local businesses, increasing local jobs and revenue. And Guilford earned 45 points in this category. And a featured credit that we pursued is around sustainable purchasing. As you know, we adopted a sustainable purchasing policy in April 2019, and we're working towards encouraging and increasing the use of environmental-friendly products and services in town. The second category is around well-studied land and natural resources. Guilford earned 55 points in this category. And a featured credit is our development of an open space plan. And we earned 25 points across this credit for work that's been done over the years. They acknowledged our plan for conservation and development and how it built on previous planning efforts and documentation. They acknowledged our-- They acknowledged our efforts with not-for-profit partners to protect open space, such as the Goss Property Acquisition. And, you know, we were very pleased to show the hard work that has been done over the years in this category. The third is around vibrant and creative cultural ecosystems. And this is acknowledging the value that artistic and cultural opportunities create in municipalities. And Guilford was very strong, earning 40 points in this category. We earned 25 of those 40 points in supporting arts and creative culture, which really acknowledged all the cultural offerings in town, including library events, parks and recreation events, our poet laureate program, and the active partnerships that the town has with Guilford Art Center and the Performing Arts Festival. The next category is around dynamic and resilient planning. And this was actually our strongest category across all categories. And this is really around planning and balancing needs in town, and we earned 65 points. And one featured credit within this category was our work to assess climate vulnerability. And Sustainable Connecticut here acknowledged our work with the Plan for Conservation and Development, coastal resiliency planning that was done with nature conservancy back in 2013 and 2014, and most recently, the Community Resiliency Workshop that was held last summer. The next category is around transportation choices. We earned 60 points in this category. They acknowledged our work with the Mobility Task Force, regional trainings that various individuals have attended in passing a Safe Streets Mobility Plan. They also acknowledged work that's been done over the past two years related to pedestrian safety along the town green and along Route 77 from the Adams Middle School. The next category is around efficient physical infrastructure and operations. And we earned 30 points in this category for actions all related to our 2018 Energy Performance Contract, which included the retrofit of streetlights, installation of solar PVs on our school buildings, and then also our reporting of annual energy use townwide in the Energy Star Portfolio Manager. Next is strategic and inclusive public services, which in some ways is a catch-all for a lot of different activities in town. There's two that I highlighted here. One is around training municipal representatives. We earned five points for sending four individuals to trainings over the course of 2019 from any of our commissions and any of our staff. We know there was probably a lot more training activity that we didn't capture in this, but we were able to demonstrate four trainings. The second one, which is, is very different, is around recycling. And we earned 20 points for allowing residents to recycle mattresses and electronics free of charge at the transfer station. And, you know, this last statement really impressed me that in three months during 2019, and this was data that Janice provided, Guilford recycled 802 mattresses weighing over 37,000 pounds, which just blew me away. The next category, healthy housing options. We only earned 10 points in this category, but we were able to complete a housing needs assessment by putting together a housing data profile and presenting these documents to the public at one of the board's meetings, I think it was about a year ago, last summer. And then finally, our equity actions. In order to earn silver certification, you do have to show a minimum of three equity actions. And I already mentioned our efforts to pass the ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags. We also pursued an equity action related to parking solutions on the town green, showing that collaborations between the Economic Development Commission, the Green Merchants, and St. George really was an innovative and inclusive solution to increasing parking capacity on the town green. And then the third was the great efforts to provide potable water to the Mulberry Point community. Interestingly, the program did not include a credit related specifically to potable water. So as critical as that is, we were happy to be able to show Guilford's good efforts in this area and earn both an innovation and equity point. So moving forward, we're really looking at the next six months as an opportunity to meet with you and reach out to other commissions in advance of seeking broader and inclusive community input. We're doing some efforts related to community resiliency as follow-up to the workshop from last summer and also some educational initiatives. We are looking for a more specific charge that reflects this work. And we expect that come January, next January, 2021, through August 2022, which is an 18-month period, that will be again in an active work and documentation phase for our next certification period. And that's the end of the presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Julie at this point? No? Terry, are you on the line?
Mute. Yes, yes, hi. I'm on the line for about five more minutes until my next meeting.
Okay. Julie, thank you very much for that overview and presentation. And as I stated at the outset, I, I, we are in agreement. We are looking at what is, what does the future look like for the, for the task force in terms of its continued charge and exist, and, and efforts? And I think it clearly has, has already shown value. The sustainable purchasing policy that we put in place, I think, is, is evidence of that. Now, Terry, are there any comments you wanted to add at this point? Hold on. Terry?
Yep, yeah, I lost you for a moment.
Okay. Is there, is there anything you'd like to add to what Julie put together?
No, thank you, Julie. I, I think that was a great summary of what we're doing. We're really looking forward to the next months and, and the next phase of, of our organization to, you know, continue to bring attention to our, our town and the sustainability efforts that we do make. And I'm, I'm very proud of that. I just want to give a quick, a quick peek at an effort we're making now towards a pollinator pathway. The task force is, and the town of Guilford will partner with the Guilford Community Garden on hopefully making the whole town a pollinator pathway, which is really necessary and, and a great action for us to take for sustainability and resiliency. But yes, thank you very much for allowing us to present this to you today.
Right, I just want to also mention a couple of things that Terry and I have talked about. Setting up some kind of composting, formal composting program somewhere in town, perhaps up at the, at the waste transfer station. Also, the, there, which will go some way towards helping us achieve our reductions in solid waste. DEP has some targets established for municipalities over time to reduce their solid waste. And one of the easiest ways to do that is through, through composting and taking food scraps out of the, the solid waste flow. Again, I mentioned earlier that it was, it became very obvious to me after it was pointed out to me that the manner in which we have been handling Lake Quantipug, and you're all aware that we've been applying chemicals and treatments to that to, to fight the growth of weeds and algae and so forth, lily pads or whatever. And it, it, I think it's appropriate that we have the voice of the sustainable task force relative to how do we, how do we manage that lake? So at this point, I mentioned, we're looking to add a member of the task force to the Conservation Commission. And then additionally, there is a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission, which is now starting to focus on the long-term, long-term treatments and, and use of Lake Quantipug. So we, I think that's, that's an excellent opportunity for us to, to expand the, the reach and the role of the Sustainable Task Force. So more to come on that. Anybody, any questions or comments on that?
I just wanted to say thank you for the very concise and clear presentation and all the work that the committee has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay. Item eight, appointments and resignations. Eight dot one is to act on a recommendation to appoint Caroline Herrick to the Guilford Tree Advisory Board as the Lee Island Garden Club representative to fill a vacancy for a term to expire February 28, 2023. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
There you go. And a second?
Second.
Second. Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda? Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Aye.
And Selectwoman Renner's aye as well, as, as is Selectwoman. Item nine, committee reports. Or correspondence, rather. Ten is committee reports. Lou, did I hear that you reached out to Town Hall South to reconvene with them?
Yeah, they have sent us a proposal. They're going to set up, they'd set up, but tried to set up a meeting last Tuesday. I wasn't able to make it. And I'm going to try and jump in this week or hopefully next week at the latest to hear what their thinking is and to make sure there's no holes in that. And then frankly, Pam, we're going to get something for you to take a look at after that. And Matt, and so hopefully we're, we're within the two-week stretch here.
Right. Okay.
Matt, on the correspondence on, in Public Works, it said open issue sightlines issue. Is that just cleaning up the sightlines in the various streets? Or is there something special which you know?
No, just, just, that's a standard item. You know, they're always, always looking for the sightline issues. Actually, I got a call in the office two weeks ago, just prior to the storm on Long Hill Road, someone was complaining about sightlines. So that's a, that's just a standard.
Yeah, okay.
And really what's supposed to happen is as they're going around town, if they see them, they're supposed to take care of them, so. All right. Item 11, old business, anyone? New business. I have one item I just want to bring to your attention. As you know, Brian McLoone has retired and we are contemplating what to do, in fact, filling that position. I have, there have been several folks who have indicated an interest in it. Mitch and I have not yet posted the position yet. We are, we were working through the job description and potential revisions. The first selectman, first select woman, Peggy Lyons from Madison, reached out to me about the possibility of combining efforts between the two, two communities. Their town planner has the responsibility for economic development and apparently is unable to devote the kind of time that they feel, he feels, and Peggy feels is, is warranted. I also got a backdoor invitation through, through Sandy and, and Mr. Dukes in, in Madison, who's chair of the Madison Economic Development Commission, asking for the same consideration. So I, I met with the economic, our Economic Development Commission, Brian's last meeting, to talk about the role and the, the possibility of combining it. My initial reaction was it potentially could set up some very, it could set up some conflicts. If you're trying to attract new business into one town versus the other, how do we go about doing that? Going beyond the 24 hours also creates a, a different scenario. We'd now be paying that individual employment, I would be paying benefits, health benefits, as well as contributing to the 401K, so that, that, that change, that changes the model a little bit. Madison doesn't have an allocation, but what I've committed to do is to work with the Madison, with First Select One, their EDC and our EDC to, to, to give it an honest evaluation. Because, you know, we, we talk about regionalism so often and so easily, but here is possibly a chance for that to happen. Again, I'm not, I'm not committing to it and I haven't committed to it with them. So one of the things that I am intent, I would like to do and will, will be moving forward, is Mitch and I have had some conversations. As we go through that process, it's clear to me that we need someone here to work with the business community. Because one of the important pieces of Brian's role was as a liaison to the land use departments and also liaison to the business community. Brian did an awful lot of work communicating with the business community around COVID, the reopening and that kind of stuff. So one thing that I am going to move, collectible forward with, just want to get your feeling is to, is to hire an interim Economic Development Director with no guarantee that the job is going to last much more than the six months while we go through this process. And that individual will be aware of the fact that they would then have to reapply for the job at, at that point. So I, and I think that gives us an opportunity to honestly look at the need and the position. There was, has been discussion at, at the Economic Development Commission about making it full-time just for Guilford. I'm not convinced that that, that, that is something that we need to do at this time, but I'm willing to listen to the Economic Development Commission folks as to why. So that, at this point, that is my plan to move forward with a part-time, an interim Economic Development Coordinator.
Matt, can I ask you a question about that? Because that sounds like a really thoughtful way of moving forward with this. But to, to, to respond to your concern about regionalizing and how you would balance, you know, geez, I got one perfect opportunity, where does it land, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we ask and charge the, the interim? Do you answer questions like that?
Actually, that would, that would be, that would be part of the charge to the interim.
All right. Not surprising, you were, you were on that. It just, you know, popped into my head. So it seemed like, it seemed like a sensible way to go. Essentially, you know, advocating for. Anyway, I'm done.
Sandy?
I just wanted to say that when I just mentioned this to Matt, because I know Ryan Duques, I, I was not necessarily advocating for the regionalization or not the regionalization, but I think, I think looking at it is, is a good idea. So I think your plan so far is, is great.
Yep, agreed.
Good. All right. More, more to come on that. And I'm not quite at liberty, I have an, I have an idea that there is an evolving situation that presented, I think, a very, very strong candidate who in, would, would probably, I know, would look at that interim position very favor. So I will be providing more information on that very shortly. I won't disclose it at this point because I'm quite, I'm not at liberty to yet, so. All right. Anything else under new business? Public Forum? I don't think we have anyone left. So we have at least one more Zoom meeting and that would be our first meeting in September. And then I think we need to be prepared at that meeting to determine whether we want to actually all get back together physically. The, I, I think the governor is probably going to extend his emergency order, is what I'm hearing. That's the current thinking, which I, I, I haven't heard about the Phase 3 stuff yet or the Phase 4 stuff. They've been very quiet about that. You know, we, we're continuing to run, you know, staggered, staggered shifts or staggered workdays in terms of in the office versus working from home. However, I'm, I'm personally at a point where I am comfortable getting back together. We do social distancing in one of the large conference rooms at the community center where we can stay six feet apart. So I'm, I'm, I'm getting there. I am there. And, but I want everyone else to be, as I said before, if there is one of us who is not comfortable, we are not doing it. So. All right?
Thanks for that.
All right, folks. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? This one is a voice. This one is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Aaron, can you drop the?